He has to go to the town for that. That's an investigation. All right, first item on discussion is the Virginia Department of Transportation, secondary six-year plan. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. That's what it is.
Okay. Doug?
You've got a hard copy here.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah, you just, I don't, with this light, you can't see the...
Let there be light.
We'll see him.
All right, this is, uh, this is the county's opportunity to weigh in on the dollars that's been allocated for the next six years on the secondary system and to see if they want to maintain the same priorities that they have. That's what we're just set up on, the priorities that were established last year. Some of them, uh, if you will look, before we go through the slides, if you will look at this, I believe each of you have this in your... If not, I thought, there's pretty much there.
May I have a little session?
No.
Oh, I'm not in. Come on in.
It is what's what is being done here. I hope that decides on the project, because this is a repair one.
Just so happens I traveled that road almost as much as you probably.
Maybe more. Yeah, maybe more.
He's sent something good through there all day.
So I need to continue.
Yes, please. Yeah, we're...
Okay, that's fine. Uh, this sheet, I wanted to run through this before we go through the slides. Kind of the same thing. This is just a little bit more detailed to explain the planning of these projects. And if you look at two of four, there's some projects on here that cannot be changed, but they're fully funded and they're scheduled to be operated. So we've gone down the list. The Morgan, the first one, of course, the bridge, and all was completed. The work that we're waiting on now is not part of the project that you had or what the county... The Happy Creek Road, that's pretty well locked in. The Rocky Lane is under construction. We're hoping to see completion of that before...
I've been scared to drop down there.
Richardson Road is fully funded, so we would like not to change that number. Uh, the same with Bucksmill Road.
Those two projects will be constructed in terms of ideas or like...
We've misnamed it. We're going to be part of...
Yes.
Form two. Try and check. It's a what?
Well, actually, it's called part service. It's a primacy.
What width would it fit that in?
Uh, we try to get 18 feet. Can't get that every place, but that's what we try to do.
Issue alleviating that widow problem there. We have a section.
They're working on that now.
Thank you.
Will it eliminate? Here's the thing about the rule rushing contract allows us to do some of these rules that we can afford to completely do. Is we have to work within the 30-foot length. We, we can't do major reconstruction in terms of straightening out curves and taking out over verticals. Okay, we're not allowed to do that on the concept. Uh, we do try to make take, take care of the drains.
Well, not eliminating that some additional eaves and things.
Yes.
Yes.
And when it's donated, we can do that.
Yeah, even if donated.
Yeah, okay. But where we have to purchase in it becomes, it cannot no longer be a...
Life protection.
Yeah. It can no longer be a rule rush if it has to be a full project publicly.
Yeah, back to Richardson and Bucksmill, and Mr. Murray asking about drains, and he said they're working on that. We need to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I understood it that way.
We had our environmental, people were out there before us, and we're changing some pipelines out there to assist with that. Is it going to completely eliminate it? Probably not.
No.
But if we can make it better...
But it'll be other.
Yeah, it can.
So the plan is still to construct both those projects later this construction season. Are you using your contract forces?
No, our people are doing both of these. And they're doing Ashby Station.
When is Ashby Station supposed to start?
Ashby Station started. They started replacing pipes.
We got it done last month.
Yes. Now, what we're trying to do is get on all of these that are fully funded and we're trying to get this construction season, is we're trying to get all the things done, all the stone down and the ditching done, and then we will have one contractor come in and do the primacy, just like we did on, on 638, because it makes for a much nicer job.
And Morgan Ford Road, this is a bridge approach. You think that'll take care of everything?
Uh, the Morgan, that project right there was for the bridge and the original construction altogether. Morgan Ford is, we use a separate project to take care of the approach on its south of the...
All right. So it says approaches, that's...
The original part, right?
The original construction route. The, uh, the estimate to fix that approach right now is somewhere between a half a million and 600,000.
You know when that construction takes place?
Well, it's, we're, we had, hopefully, it's going to start this spring, but like now, they're, they're projecting some time in all this time.
When it starts raining, it'll start raining.
Well, hopefully, maybe one.
Thinking possibly here, it...
We want to try to do it so we don't experience. Because it, it will go much faster than what you're thinking about. Uh, if you look on page three, Panhandle Road, uh, where, where we get to the point that the board wants to make changes, we would not disrupt you much, is beginning. Those projects are from 2020 to 2021.
This is from the Bentonville end. This is Panhandle, the Bentonville end up...
Yeah, we got two sections. This is from the Little Water Bridge.
It's an arm of it.
So if, this is the way you currently have your priorities laying out. And if you want to change those priorities now, it'll be the time.
This 1.1 mile, that from the Little Water Bridge all the way up to the National Forest, National...
Uh, I don't know. Uh, we have to, uh...
It's pretty, probably pretty...
We got, we got, there's two sections in the plan, okay? Both of them, uh, the page two goes from the mountain range, just like we were looking for 30, 60 acres. I could find that after you.
But there's still, there's still, from this 1.1 mile north of the bridge, going up to Sager Drive, it's still a couple miles of that. So that, that is Little Water Bridge north coming on to the Panhandle.
Uh, one thing from our standpoint, even though you all have the option, we would really like to close that gap on all of the bridges.
From a standpoint of compliance, it's probably...
And safety, because they come flying and they hit that stone section, and they, you can watch the cars, it's going to be an accident.
Yes. And so that, they would improve that too, that section to know that...
That, those are on the six-year plan.
Carter, if we can move that up any way, shape, or form, that would be a help.
It sounds like...
Not very much.
No.
It's, uh, our estimate on is about 135,000, about six tenths of a mile. The first funding, uh, well, it's applied to it beginning in July of this year, but the rest of the funding won't come until July. So our fiscal year, July, July. So the earliest delay of funding is we can start with the, uh, the, not a part of Southern Road, it's... We have to have all the funding from those...
It's a big one. Smith's got 180 trips a day.
Uh, I...
No, it's, it's in there.
It's there. In the far right.
Yeah.
Far right it shows you.
Probably about 180.
I look at these things so much, I don't think it's too easy to do.
Really, the only way to do it would be to, you'd have to bump Rocky Hollow down to be able to accommodate, unless there was a revenue sharing that trickled off on the other projects on their construction, things like that.
Which is not the earliest kind of bridge, but...
Yes.
That only piece of dirt.
The, uh, if you go to page four, Lord's and Hollow, okay, that's a different fund that is, uh, how value secondary funds, and that's pretty much Rocky Hollow.
You know, when construction will start around...
Um, or it, it's starting this summer.
This summer?
Yes.
And there will be for that, it's not a good interest?
Right in the middle. About half a mile on that hill.
Yeah, it will be, but there's no way to do that with rule rushing. Okay, you're talking about the major wave reconstruction, right away acquisition, utility, relocation, and, and, uh...
Some of the trains.
Some of the environmental issues, the part of its places that it needs.
But that's true. That high volume, lot of money won't pay for a regular project if it has to be in rush, but, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
And if it does, it's only like 300,000, near total, it's 300,000.
Right. Well, I, I think they bumped that amount before. The problem, the problem is that we've been, we had to do it that high because we're going to go here and try to replace that, no box, I mean, replace that with a box down there on the, up the road side. And, um... All right, so if you're countywide into it and survey, uh, if you look on the very front sheet, you see a column there that says penalty, okay? That's your, um, proportion of funds for, uh, the communication access. Okay? That is, that is what needs down, and you, you put that down, the countywide interview and say that we have flexibility with that, those funds down there. Now, it's possible, if, and this is, you know, if the county wants to do that, that you could, uh, you could re, uh, call for a little raise up with that, and you take the call for mill rate funds and apply those to another project.
So you're saying that you use two years of that funding?
Well, right now, you currently have, uh, you currently have 267,000 dollars in there. Okay, this year, you're going to give another 79,000. So you're going to have over 330,000, you have about 340,000, a couple miles in that fund. But now, also a point out there, this is the only fund that we have with which to handle emergencies. Okay, now, I'm not talking about maintenance emergencies, but I'm talking about emergencies. If somebody comes up and, uh, and start having a rash of accidents on the road, and we straighten out a curve or something, this is the fund.
Like that guardrail on...
Guard, guard, yeah, additional guardrails or something, it's up to this fund. So I don't recommend drawing it down to zero, but it is a, you know, a moving circle. I wouldn't let it get too high.
Right. Look, it takes, you take the money to a call for mill, you only, it's going to happen once you have, currently, Bill, we'll not include it.
Right.
Not including the mill. So if you get toward to a mill, we still have about...
And there's much a lot of the, the call for, the call for mill would, uh, move it, it might not possibly be moved without a project.
So just so everybody understands, call for mill, uh, near Lions Church, but basically there's a, there's a pave section, then a gravel section, then a pave section. Uh, the middle piece did not get paved because the prior owner did not want to dedicate the park. Right away, subsequently, part of that area was the dollar, I believe, right away.
So this is just six tenths?
Yeah.
Six tenths of a mile. It's a small piece, but it's a main.
You take constant quotes on that, I know. Nobody can...
There's detail on that part, I'm sorry.
They make up, maybe they do that, get it out of the way.
Not the piece they're talking about. The piece they're talking about is right behind the church. And first, we...
We, we like to do it and give it out along.
But that's...
Yeah, we try to spend these funds in, in concert with what's going to happen.
Two loads of, so it's, I think it's sold by, so, two years of this to build it, two, two years of this.
You've got 267.
You got 260 knocked out.
Another 79 going to it.
Yeah, and then this year, you can add another 79. So when July the first rolls around, we will have 330,000.
340,000.
It's 135 to do it.
Yeah, 135 is our estimate. So we're all, but, you know, I just see the, the, the...
I really think we should do it, but it's up to the rest of the board also.
All right. Well, that will move it up, uh, that will move it up.
Behind down the farm?
Let me, uh, I'm going to need to look at, at the work schedule and the resources to , uh, to, 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 to have a way to next year. Because now that I know you want to do that...
Yes.
So when are we looking at the Rocky Hollow, getting down there?
Uh, Rocky Hollow, uh, Rocky Hollow is fully funded, uh, and, yeah, so it would be, uh, next July.
A lot of traffic on that stuff.
Yeah, I understand.
It's always stopped.
You all are still allowed to start in the first year and pay it off in the second year.
No, no, no. It's got to, we got to have all the funds before we can open the road.
Were they, were they at Rocky Hollow before they, during the process of the placement to prepare?
I'm, I'm...
Were they widening that Rocky Hollow in?
Uh, anything that we can get within, uh, we've got the right of way there.
Oh, you did.
Okay, but here again, now, rule rustic, rule rustic is not designed for major reconstruction. Okay? So what we try to do is go out, pour as much of the ditch out, and we try to get our 18 feet to pay. Sometimes we get 15 on, in, in the case of, uh, the community of Mount Ruth, one place we go, we got 12 to 13, okay, because we have a historic wall there. So we get all we can get.
You get what you can get in any way to it.
Right.
Now, it'd be nice to get some road work done, other than just one district. One district's been getting about 80 to 90 percent of the road work, and it'd be good for the rest of us to be able to say, we're able to work with EDOT and get some stuff done out here, too.
Well, hey, I, here again, the board sets the priorities.
I know. I know.
The board, the board sets the priorities.
But it's, it's going to be very important that we can get some of this done.
I will say, and remind you, last year, uh, because we knew we was going to get some funding in place to build some of these roll rushes this summer, the third, fourth, or fifth one, we looked at, uh, putting together this, of remaining unchanged roads in the county, and I think we still had about 10 that had over 100 trips a day. We went through that process just prior to this work session last year, and the board added about four projects on pending this, and crawlwork has, I think we've got more than much.
Yep.
About each district.
Thank you, Mark.
I will also, as this, this is a matter of information, uh, Frederick County has a rail system. And, uh, because this discussion comes up, Shenandoah County just adopted whereby every road is rated, and then it's wherever they're giving the biggest funding for their project, it's whatever, uh, moving to, so, I don't know if that's something the board wants to consider, to, to send the information to yourself.
I think it's a lot of fun.
Huh?
I think it's a lot of fun.
Well... Who does the, I'm sorry, who does the, that county does it. They refurnish the information, and, and the county makes it, and I'm not blaming it by, by traffic counts, uh, by, uh, residents and this. They do it by accidents, by weather, my first, who was traffic, and they do it by, uh, in other words, they've got four miles of road and there's 200 trips a day on the road. Those 200 trips might all be on one, and it's about the whole thing.
We sort of do that, haven't we? I mean...
I don't, I don't know how do you all do it?
Well, I think what happens is, one like a Rocky Hollow, when it's boards high, because you got 100 trips, but it does, that doesn't take into account any of the summer recreational traffic, so. Traditionally, boards looked at traffic counts and trying to get them to get to that. But some other projects, even if it's like the, you know, call for mill, it's not that big, but it's a maintenance headache, and it's hard to put that maintenance headache in that category, right?
And sometimes you just have to, just getting that one out of the way.
Yes, well, the maintenance, we, the maintenance is also another factor.
You might, you have to put a lot of grammar on this, my brothers, right? You're a long way in rule rustic.
Ma'am, I just throw that out.
Well, a lot of these, well, a lot of them, it's some of them, Rocky Hollow, for example, that, that road, the holdover from the 20th, 30th year plan, it was on the, on the plan there together. When I was there, we got, now the one that was added last year, was there some sort of defined or scientific formula we used, and I would just look at traffic count, when I looked at them, or the narrow, or the speed, or the, the maintenance problem, or something.
We didn't have rule rustic back then.
No, we didn't.
And it's almost against...
And we're, we're, it's a good tool that EDOT has now, that puts a, a bang for a buck in the bottom line, getting people from driving in the mud.
Yeah.
Might not be the widest, straightest, you know, plant next road used to appear to go, but it at least gets people out of the mud and stuff, puts a trade on them. What was the, you were going to figure?
Uh, not to my screen, but what it is, is, every, we have been for the last two years, uh, been granted discretionary funds for each county, okay? Uh, and this past year, one county was granted 15,985 dollars of discretionary funds for safety, time limits for safety projects. But that usually for maintenance, usually for maintenance. And, uh, 36,000 will split to place the camera up on, uh, please don't...
No, both of them?
Please don't, uh...
Please don't, right?
Please don't, not my hands. And so there's 16,900, you need, uh...
It's a new panel where you can see what's in the issue.
We spend out to place guardrail where it's warranted, uh, you know, whatever safety related. Unfortunately, you know, turn lanes are safety things, but you can't put a turn lane with the 50 down now. So, so...
Not more.
So they, they encourage us to spend it out every year, because we don't know whether we're going to get it following. Now, we have been told by, uh, Deputy Commissioner that we're going to get it again this year. Okay, now, being told you're going to get it, it's a, it's two years' plan, but I've no reason to doubt it. It's a program we started about, uh, two years ago, still a year.
Does line painting fall under safety?
I'm sorry?
Your line painting, does that fall under safety?
Uh, it does if, uh, if it's keeping people on the road, okay, refreshing pain, uh...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but they have budgets for that.
Okay.
And keep in mind that we have to have at least 19 for the pavement for 500 vehicles a day to put edge line, those type of things.
Because you did, uh, your lines, well, maintenance work on the prison road by painting those lines. I think you did that last year.
Yes. So refreshing those lines will keep, but that, it wouldn't be one of this safety.
But it is a safety issue, too, because people can't, that's what they were complaining, so they couldn't see the, as it arose.
You ready to get to your call?
Yes. I guess it's what we'll present at the public hearing. But this, this, you can really get tired of trying to call it very fast, as, uh, you know, everybody, I mean, you told me to simplify it, this is the major project, uh, Morgan Ford Road, which is simply, and the Happy Creek Road, which is a dedicated, smart spare project. smart scale project.
And what happened to Creek Road, something like that?
Uh, right now, I think the Senate is starting this twenty twenty-two. They add, they add, they add dates a bit sometimes in twenty twenty-four, and after construction, they do it twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is your... This is basically a, just a, uh, abbreviated form of all of these numbers, columns, and things on the other side. You have your CTV formula money, which ends in twenty twenty. And then you have your district grant unpaid, which begins in twenty twenty-four.
Just, uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, that number was significantly higher.
Was she...
The, the formula money, the columns.
The formula money, uh, was part of the, out of the legislature state page. Um, yeah, it was a lot higher. Well, yes, district grant was less than. And then your telefee funds, as I said, that generally, that new, you generally shift all that down into the county wide insurance fund. And these, these hard surface projects align with what is on the construction, if we haven't made a mistake, of course. And Rocky Lane, National Station, Richardson Buckville, Downfall, and, and Littleton. Then Rocky Hollow and Coffin Mill. Now, what I will do is, before, uh, I will go back and see how we can ship Coffin Mill and the other funds into the construction schedule, and then move the money as appropriate to the end down, and then, then may or may not ship to schedule four or five.
I see Tom Hawke way, face two, twenty nineteen point.
That, that is, Tom Hawke, uh, these are, uh, projects that are being done with, uh, more additions of the share, but I, uh...
Yes. And Minister Bobbitt.
And, you know, all these projects are being done.
Except...
Except for Lakefront.
These are typically rural additions, or, I'm trying to picture Coffin Mill. In the front row, San Terre District, that one, okay? All that, all of it. We, uh, we're...
Lakefront Road.
Oh, Lakefront Road, yeah. We still have, we, we still got it, but it's complete, essentially, but we need to go back and address some stuff now that is settled, but socially it's...
They finished it like last fall, so probably go preseason, or something.
Yeah, that's good.
Little punch list.
We took a little...
It's got a lot of, it's a lot of good positives, in fact.
Yes, once, once they saw the citizens being done, yeah. Okay, these, uh, page seven, okay, reflects projects that were filed, I think, for the county, but I think they're in the funds. And these are, uh, these are not, uh, rural rustic, these are major, major projects. And right now, uh, we only have two options for those, one is Smart Scale, and the other is, uh, revenue sharing.
And I would just add that VDOT's, uh, pre-application period for this next round of Smart Scale applications, which includes revenue sharing projects, is coming forward in May fifteen, right now. I think that's about a two to three, three applications, and the, and applications have got to begin this fall, again, for new, or, uh, pre-existing revenue sharing projects with need addition function.
Are we putting all of them down there?
No, we, we have never applied for these, only for a couple of reasons that are significant. Paul, Steve, the problem is preliminary estimates, plus we have the standing list that this board approves the rural addition projects. I think there's thirty-some projects on that list that you typically apply for every, the Tom Hawks, the Lakefront Royal's.
Now, you know, if you want to apply for these, you want to go through that, but I'll give you the wrong. Last year, they had, uh, seven, seventy million dollars in projects, and they had eight hundred and ninety million dollars in spending. So...
Now, pretty big number stack. And I would just say, from a guy that loves to do grunt work and put the applications together, while these are critically important for us and our community, they don't stand much of a change in competing with other similar roads that might be carrying, you know, tens of thousands at the end of the day in, in Northern Virginia or Virginia, or even around Winchester, or, or San, you know, it's always still larger for me. So it's a lot of, a lot of time and effort, so, in the end of the day, probably not so worth it.
Yeah, and, and the, the Stan distribution is seventy-eight projects, and I think we ended up with, uh, sixteen and eight years. It's a day that's small, projects, and, you know, uh, there's a lot, a lot of high power that the county wants to be, like the, the Happy Creek, Tommy, and we just want to help with that, too.
They get headaches, and, and, it's difficult.
But on the other hand, we, we have been extremely successful in, well, Call of Loane, through the, the smaller rural addition gravel roads, half a mile, that we've been upgrading for a couple hundred thousand dollars, taking, very well.
I can't perceive us, with the way the budget is, and everything that's taking place right now, doing revenue sharing, like, three or five million dollar projects. I just can't, unless somebody wants to do an endowment, other than that, I can't perceive it.
And then last page is simply, uh, you know, these are final estimates, we use to, uh, and this doesn't have the inflation factors, and, uh, this might be a final estimate today, depending on how the economy goes a few years from now, it may be a hundred and twenty-five, twenty-five.
And you got to say that you have four lane new, new construction, it's four, almost one and a half million miles, and you look at Fifty-Five East, that was thirty for a couple of miles.
That was thirty-six.
Topography and drainage, all the challenges you had to do.
Are there any questions out there? I love a talk from you, I'm sure you're going to ask you a question, but it's a change.
I just want to thank you for considering Coffin Mill. I know you're constantly running up there, that's a nuisance area, but if you're standing there and watch the traffic coming through certain times of the day, it's an accident waiting to happen. When they hit that stone, they go somewhat sideways, and you don't slow down.
Ward County's got, uh, the twenty-fourth out, this house, uh, eight good, and I hope that it'll be this construction, uh, see, uh, just a little. I hope they're trying to, I hope they're trying to get, uh, they're trying to get between six and eight miles down the road, but it's good.
If you can get that revised copy down to us, we'll have it available in the public room. Next, we have the discussion follow-up on Town of Front Royal utilization of the local viewer of building code appeals. Mr. Bean?
This is our, thank you. The board, uh, approximately two months ago, decided that the question that was raised by the Town of Front Royal to have our Board of Appeals here, any property maintenance that, cases that may come to the appeals board through their new program, that they have actually now chosen to push off until another fiscal year. The question was asked if the members of the appeals board wish to actually take this on. I have heard back from the appeals board, and they have decided that they would, in fact, take this on if the board decides to do that. So really, the question now is, does the board wish to pursue this? And if so, I have a couple of questions, but I will get a proposal put together for the board to decide, and then take it to a board meeting to have that presented. But the next step would be, as far as the Board of Supervisors, what their desire is. The question previously was, does the Board of Appeals wish to take it on? Yes?
I, I said, we asked that, we wanted to know if they were willing.
That is correct, and they are.
And they're still saying, then, it's not going to be much of the maintenance thing. Those guys do that.
It's a hit or miss, because typically, the appeals portion of it is only by the proponent, by the person who's being, that, that has the infraction. So if they choose to appeal it, they take it to the appeals board. Typically, what the process is, is that there's a notice of violation issued by property maintenance, and it goes directly to court, because that's the process for the notice of violation to pursue.
That would come from the town, right?
That would come from the town, yes.
So they, they'll issue to the property owner?
Correct. We would have no process or piece of actually issuing a notice of violation. The only portion that would affect the building inspections department would be that if a notice of violation is served by the property maintenance, nine times out of ten, it's going to require a building permit to take care of it. So we may see an influx of building permits, which we recover costs as far as with the permit fees and everything, but we would not actually have any stake in the actual property maintenance piece of that. So my question to the board, are there any other questions? And if so, does the board want me to pursue the process as far as getting it worked out for details?
Do you, do you have a quick pro and con?
Well, the, the cons to it, obviously, our Board of Appeals currently does not have a fee structure. They, they don't have a fee that is given to them to meet. So while it, right now, is, is limited on their appeals, if we increase their appeals, does the board wish to give them a stipend for each and every meeting? Uh, we have a process where an appeal for the local building portion is a hundred dollar fee, and that covers the secretary, that takes care of the managing of the minutes and the meetings and everything else. It also provides all the documentation, it also provides that timeframe out of the office to actually sit as the secretary.
So that fee is charged to the appellate?
To the appellate, yes.
And we, we should be, should be...
Well, I, I don't disagree with that. I would probably think that it should be higher for a town service, because now you're actually not serving the county as a whole, you're serving just the town, in that regard.
And your county, too, then?
They, they are. My, my premise is, is the fact that the hundred dollars doesn't really cover the cost at all. It's just a, it's basically, here's what the fee is to cover minimal costs for that. We're not recouping everything.
Well, then we should, because it's taxpayers' money. So we should reevaluate where our scale is, and if we have to adjust it, adjust it. Now, we need to do that, though.
How do you calculate the cost? I mean, you said it doesn't cover, so you must have...
Typically, your material package, you're going to have at least five, if not six, packets produced. That could range from ten pages to a hundred pages, as far as copying and making sure that they have all of that product in hand. The secretary spends approximately an hour to two hours, typically on a small case, to provide all that documentation into one packet, so that they have that, gathering the information, putting it all together. Typically, it's an hour to two hours for a hearing, then the minutes take another hour to two hours. So you're looking at anywhere between six and ten hours of staff time out of my office to do that for the secretary, because by, by the law, typically, it is a employee of the county in the building inspections department that accesses the secretary to the board. So approximately six hours to ten hours timeframe, that's not including the materials costs and the cost of putting things together. We figured that a hundred dollars is a fair amount, other jurisdictions actually charge more around us, uh, some of them charge less than what we do. But when we did our rate scale, our fee schedule, I compared all the localities around, some are as, as high as five hundred dollars.
Which might be the true cost.
Cost. And that's just for the building code appeals, that's not taking into account for the property maintenance.
But, but if an animal were to be property maintenance, would you perceive it being more? I mean...
Not really, no, I don't, I don't. I'm just, I'm throwing these questions out, the pros and cons as to what we're doing, what we're providing, what the town would be responsible for, what they would not be responsible for. One of the discussion items, uh, as far as, I can't consider it a pro or con, the town has chosen or stated that they would actually provide the legal assistance for the Board of Appeals for a property maintenance. So that would take out the cost of having legal counsel present for the Court of Appeals. So that's a, that would be a major piece, as far as the cost. Really, those are the biggest pieces in getting the details worked out with the town as to how they, how they would like to proceed with this, as far as what portions they would pick up, what they would actually expect the county to take on, and things of that nature.
So right now, we have a cart before the horse, and we're trying to reverse it. This should have been all thought out in the beginning, this should have all been arranged before they started the process. I think you need to put together an actual cost, or as close to an estimate as you can, of what the cost per hour is. And you have to consider, if you're using employees, not just their hourly wage, but you need to consider their benefits. So have a total cost, not an hourly cost. You need that to put together, how much does it cost to do one page for a FOIA request? Then you take that, times that by your sheets of what you're doing on an estimate, and you can give us a fairly close estimate. I don't think it's fair to move on anything on this till we know what the cost might be.
I don't think you're gonna do that. I think Mr. Bean said the town's already pushed this back a year, next fiscal year, so I think you're playing time, trying to get this information together, and then come back to us, but I think your points are valid.
And, and I don't disagree with that, and I have no issue with that. I didn't want to spend and invest the time if the board said...
No.
No, we don't want to do that. That, okay, and that's, that would be the way that I will proceed, so I will get the cost and things of that nature, and I will put together a concise list of pros and cons, so that you can see those as well. Thank you. Thank you.
And then we have recommendations regarding county boards and commissions. Mr. Fox?
Yes, that's, that's something that perhaps we should, uh, consider, just as we're doing it, one phase, perhaps we could take on more boards and be more responsible financially.
I, I've been in the process, we haven't completely put it together, but looking at the other boards, I really, I think we're covered, because, well, let's give you an example, planning commission, BZA, all their expenses and stuff run through the planning department budget, they don't have a separate budget. Um, the Department of Social Services is covering, it's a department covering the county audit, but the actual DSS board is only in a budget where they have no authority financially. We stripped that away back in two thousand and ten. Board Building Code Appeals runs through David Budget and Building Department, they have no separate budget.
no separate budget. The Board of Assessors and Board of Equalization are all covered under the assessment budget, they don't have any authority to approve any of these monies, they don't have any separate accounts as well. The Airport Commission used to, and we took that, they made them an advisory board and all the financials are running through the county.
They don't have the authority to spend money on their own, correct?
That's right.
They never have.
No. Not the last, what, 12 or 15 years, you know, they take another authority away from them like. The Ag Forest Committee is known, well, it's such a appeals board, how much is y'all's budget?
About half a million.
That runs through the planning department.
It runs through the planning department and there's few assesses who brought the applicant.
So what I would like to do is, for that question number one, is just put the spreadsheet together. So I think, I haven't run across anything that I'm aware of, like where any of those groups have any fiduciary responsibility and have any separate authority over making financial decisions. They're tucked under the department budgets and, you know, Bob has to sign off on anything with the airport and not the commission.
Well, I think what's happened at the EDA has probably made some of us a little nervous what could happen.
For good reason, yeah.
Good to answer questions.
So I will, I'll put that list together for you and we'll confirm it. We confirm that to make sure whether there's no, like I said, all that's, all those are covered under our existing audit. Now, question two, and I think it's a good, valid question there, especially as we're getting ready to change over the treasurer retiring and we're going to have some new folks there and of course Andre's only been in there for two years, is to ask RFC, our audit firm, whether they want to do this separately or do it part of the audit process, which they're actually coming in here next month to start field work for the FY19 audit, is to review our procedures and go into everything, that's an easy ask for them, so I'll be glad to do that. Say, hey, given what's, what's happened and occurred, we'd like you to review all of our process procedures, spend some extra time in the treasurer's office to make sure things are being done appropriately, spend some time in the finance office, we can do that as well.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah, so the first question was, all county boards and commissions should be required to the county service fiscal agent. Question two was, the county procedures and safe orders currently used by the treasurer and finance department must be reviewed to ensure the most updated county and audit procedures are in place and involved. Three, the board, in conjunction with the board's commissions, these, what deliberations should be kept behind closed doors and what should be made public, it's honest government requirement, transparency.
I don't know.
And this is basically on the previous information, you can only go in closed session under certain exemptions and you have to lay out what the exemption is, what the subject matter is, you have to certify going in, certify coming out, you can only make a, you know, prove anything into a concession, specifically the short version of it. So there's 20, 30 exemptions that go under closed session, so you have to specifically label, you know, lay out that closed session subsection.
Are you thinking those boards, which is actually going into closed sessions, DSS still in closed session as well?
Only if it's posted in a closed session.
At a CPTU, is that? And we did go into closed session a couple times, we were, we talked to.
Well, yeah, we're going to, we could go into closed session, yeah, when we consider the, the choices.
Right.
That's, yeah, the cost because of it.
So, you know, EDA goes in a closed session to discuss personnel, to discuss, you know, purchasing a property, you don't want to give away your negotiation strategy in an open session.
You have to keep.
We, same as the Board of Supervisors does so. And then we're meeting with prospects, we don't want, a lot of these prospects don't want their name to get out there because they could have another plant they might be closing or another officer closing.
I wouldn't either.
And those are probably the three main areas we go. Or consultation of legal counsel regarding litigation is one subsection, and you always lay out what the case name is, or basically general advice, we always have to lay out what the subject matter is. So you have to, you can't, you don't have to be so specific that you're giving away the reason for going in, but you have to basically generally lay out why it's appropriate for closed session.
Is there a, are there any closed sessions? I'm sorry, this is your coordination?
No, no, I've never known about.
I think you should, I think you should do that.
Not since, we don't have any person known. Board of Equalization can, they're discussing like an income producing property, but.
I appreciate us doing this, I think it makes us more comfortable going forward. We know that we're already doing much of the thing, but some people are concerned.
And if the Board of Supervisor members want to participate in EDA closed session, they can ask the chair in advance, as long as it's only two members there, if it's three members there, then it's a meeting of the supervisors. So, just we just ask the chair, it's the chair's decision.
Is that what happens?
And it's always been the relationship we've had with Board of Supervisors at EDA is they ask, whether it be the town or the, or the group of supervisors.
Do you have anything else?
Number four was getting qualified and motivated citizens to fly to serve on boards and commissions, which has been a struggle. First, probably sign up with the FAL. Typically, we, obviously, we do Anthony Paker, we do website, we do Facebook, obviously, Anthony Tomlin, the board member of word of mouth, helps as much as any fan. It's usually when people call me and say, hey, I talked to supervisors, so I said, did y'all have some openings and where can I get applications?
What about, yeah, this is difficult, so this is the longest, same lines. And I think I brought this up before, but it's legal for the, I think we need to have a mechanism in there for a number of employees. It's like the EDA, it was, they had to be a, majority of their board recommend to us change that, not all, where ads had to be with unanimous consent to remove somebody.
Well, that was a lot under the state there.
That was loud, that's right, that's what I'm going to say, but, you know. I mean, there may be sometimes, I think, maybe the planning commission, and I think they're appointed and must be now beaten, so this is, so I don't know if that can be changed. The Airport Commission, I'm sure that can be changed.
So you just have to look at the Virginia case, see if they have the authorities, we'll say if we can, the members by unanimous consent, if they should, if the board, because there's separate section of the state that would be in that board.
And we have an EDA.
Well, we have an advisory board, so that's a different.
But even so, we want to put that, even the advisory board, I think.
Now, advisory board, you can put that, planning commission has to.
I think you mentioned, oh, we can. And then the other thing too is, consideration, you know, we just talked to number four about how they're developing, get people, the board want to consider term limits. I know they did that over the tail sometime back, I'm not sure they still have it that way, but what they would do, they'd have, I think they would have the planning commission like that one, they would have three term limits, using the first term.
So.
Four years, the first, the first term, people just understanding what the role is, second term is, you're comfortable, and using that third term, they're ready to give it up. The only other question along those lines would be too, if you did term limits, want to consider term limits, which you want a grandfather in, the current members that are on there already, if that, you know, if that means you have a 12-year term limit, so like if you're on there for 18, 20 years or whatever, so that's just something to consideration, how would you want to handle that as far as, you know, if you want to do it, if you want to consider that, think about it, since it's just going to be out there, do you come back to board session or do you want to agree with the term limit idea?
I'd rather think about it.
I think at least put together a spreadsheet showing.
So the outside agencies, we want to pay out term limits from the North West side so they have, where we have a lot of power, we have term limits.
I guess.
Or some of them. I see.
I just threw this out as well, airport commission as an example, over the last three or five years, we've been jumping back and forth from various number of commissioners we have, does it make sense in the court, commission or court or whatever, four, five, the board, is it five, is it six, is it seven, and then per district that you're doing, so might cut out some of that, maybe they don't have that in the problem for many of the commissions, but it does seem to jump up in numbers. We had that seven models, is that all models, of course, that are, these are a little is, is three, is a little, four, two years, so.
And that was.
I'm not sure about that, I guess a lot of that.
Well, it's more, it's, usually it says May, May or May.
May.
Like the EDA, it says May. A lot of the boards, it's the language is May rather than show.
Maybe, just May.
We can put it back on a future board session once it got a chance to pull up there. Especially if I need to get the board stuff up, it's about all set.
Can you share the memo with everybody?
I just thought of the.
Do we have anything else to discuss? If not, we're adjourned.